I want to log in. Is it your first initial?
Good evening. I'd like to call the June 16, 2021 Finance Committee Meeting of the Whole to order. Can we have a roll call, Madam City Clerk, please?
Bean.
Here.
Beltrandi.
Here.
Burns.
Here.
Figgy.
Here.
Flaherty.
Here.
Harris.
Here.
Matthews Kane.
Here.
Mello.
Here.
Morganelli.
Here.
Oniski.
Here.
Sullivan.
Here.
Adams.
Here.
Alley.
Here.
Thank you. First on the agenda tonight is the Building Department and her subsidies. That starts with item 1241. Madam City Inspector, would you come forward and give us a brief overview of your budgets?
I have a different order. I can have a different one.
Yeah, I got a new agenda. I sent you a new one to pre-arrange things. I won't take them.
Which department do you want to start with first? Do you want to start with 241?
Let's start with, yeah, 241.
Okay, so 241 is the Building Department.
Can't read it.
So there's going to be some changes and some additions to the budget this year. Starting from the top, there's myself and another local building inspector. It's a current position. It's currently vacant. It's been vacant since last July for the third time in five years. We've budgeted for Step 6, which is the highest grade in the association for the position, just to try to get somebody in the position. Doesn't necessarily mean that we're going to offer it to a candidate that doesn't have as much experience as a more seasoned inspector, but it's there if we need to offer it. Moving down to the next line item, our head clerk, who's been there, obviously, has contractual increases. And then we've also budgeted for another full-time principal clerk at a grade 10, Step 1. As many of you probably know, the Building Department has seen a huge surge in building permit applications over the past couple of years, and it's getting to be too much for just one clerk to handle. Many times she'll be on the phone, and the phone will ring, and we have nobody else to answer it, so it's just going to help ease some of the burden that's on Sue currently. She definitely goes above and beyond to try to stay on top of things, but the permit entry alone is just very inundating right now. So we're hoping to get another full-time clerk if this goes through, which I'm hoping that you guys will keep it in the budget for me. We'll be able to post the position the way I want to get somebody in there, hopefully by the end of summer, to help alleviate the workload. Moving down to part-time hourly employees. This past fiscal year, I moved money from the vacant local inspector position to fund a part-time inspector. He currently comes in 10 to 12 hours a week to help me out. I'm hoping to keep that position there even when I do fill the full-time inspector. The intent is to have that position work on inspecting multifamily dwellings, which we don't currently inspect, that we're required to. This will also bring in additional revenue. I ran some numbers really quickly, so they're kind of raw. They're not 100% accurate, but over the last three years, since I've increased the permit fees, as I was asked to do when I was first hired, the Building Department, on average, has made a surplus of approximately $50,000 to $55,000 a year. So I'm hoping that that surplus, plus the additional surplus that we will bring in in doing the multifamily inspections, will fund the clerk position and the part-time Moving down to the purchase of service account, these are for, this is pretty much just everything that I need to pay for contractually, our cell phones for the inspectors. Our alternate inspectors, when my plumbing and electrical inspector are on vacation, we have to pay somebody to come in and inspect per inspection. They get paid per inspection as a vendor. I'm hoping to work with the union to get some language written into the contracts so we can install GPS in our three department vehicles, and also the vehicle maintenance for our four vehicles. The secure property account is, basically, we barely ever touch that money from year to year, but it's good to have as an emergency when we have to do boardups. If there's a fire in the middle of the night and the fire department can't get ahold of the owner, or if it's a vacant property, we're able to go in and secure the property afterwards, and then we just put a lien on the property. Our supply account is basically just for gas, gas charges, office supplies, and our code books. We do have a code change in the works, probably for January 1, so we're going to have to buy new code books for the department. And then our general expense count pays for our membership dues, for our continuing education, and the licenses for the plumbing and electrical inspectors. That's pretty much it for the Building Department.
Thank you. Any questions from the committee? Any questions from the council? Councilor Flaherty.
Thank you. Thanks for all you're doing, Department, and I'm going to support your increases. I have a question about boardup because I just said that the first time I've heard about it, but I know a property that needs a boardup from a former city councilor. The property's vacant. Person's no longer living. The family can't take care of it, and there's two broken windows high up. So can I just call you? Is that something the city does?
Yeah.
Okay. And then the rest of the budget, again, congratulations. I know the department's been really working hard with all this, and I hope we get you the people you need.
Thank you.
Again, just as a reminder, I know it's been a while, but please try to speak into the microphone so that the folks at home can hear you. Councilor Beltrandi.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm going to support this budget. I know uniquely how this department works. They're having some difficulty down there. We need to get more people in there. I don't know if everybody's familiar with the process, but there's an awful lot of moving parts in building permits, you know, between energy requirements and different things with, you know, plot plans and stuff, so it's not as simple as one piece of paper coming in. So there's a lot of people that need to be involved in that, and right now, we just don't have that staff. So, you know, I implore everybody to support this and see if we can get some more help down there. It's important. Thank you.
Counselor Bean.
Thank you. I also am going to support the budget. This is an easy one for me. The only thing I am just making a comment about is just something that I've said, even with some of these open positions that we have, we need to start making these priorities. It's not just the Building Department. There's other ones across the city, and these things have been holding vacant for quite some time, and we obviously need it. So I'm a little concerned about the urgency on some of this stuff. I know we've tried to apply, not just in your office, but others, and get those applications out there, but it's not working. So if we need to do something on our end to, you know, even raise salaries or find other ways to get the word out, then we need to do that. So just keep that in mind as we move forward. It's been way too long those positions have been open, and there's several in the city that have been that way, and I, you know, I said it last night as well during some of the budget stuff, so if we can help, let us know.
Thank you, sir.
Counselor Flaherty for the second time, and Beltrandi for the second time.
I need Zoom lenses. Sorry it took me so long because the screen is tiny. So I show, we just got updated year-to-date reports, Finance Committee and Long Range Finance. This department, 1241, has revenue year-to-date of $347,000. That far exceeds their budget request, so I think we should all take that in mind and realize that they are a revenue generating department. If they have the right staff, they can even generate more revenue and help the city out. Thank you.
Yes, Counselor Beltrandi.
Just real quick, for whatever reason, this is one of the only departments in the city that doesn't have a liaison from the city council, and I've kind of taken on that role to a certain extent because I, you know, I work well with Carissa, and I think we should probably at some point try and figure out how to get a liaison for that department because there's a lot of moving parts there, and like I say, you know, they need help, and not just financially, but they need somebody to be in their corner. So, you know, I think we should consider that at some point.
I'm encouraged with this budget because it has the ability to pick up the ordinance for the apartment registry that's been sitting in L and O for two years because we couldn't move forward because we didn't have the bodies. So over the summer, I will be dusting that off and fine-tuning it so we're ready to enact that in September or October because, agreed, the five-year evaluations of multifamily houses is something the city sorely lacks, and with that ordinance, with the registry and an added fee, we even make the department more fiscally sound. So it's encouraging for a long-term project I've had on the books. Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, roll call, Madam City Clerk.
Yeah, with that, Mr. President, pro temp, I move approval of the Building Department budget as presented.
Guess she wasn't too efficient tonight, was she?
There's no efficiency rating. Okay, there's a second. The Finance Committee gets along so well. And there's a second?
There's a second.
A second, okay. Now we can have the roll call, Madam City Clerk.
Bean.
Yes.
Beltrandi.
Yes.
Burns.
Yes.
Figgy.
Yes.
Flaherty.
No.
Harris.
Yes.
Matthews Kane.
Yes.
Mello.
Yes.
Morganelli.
No.
Oniski.
Yes.
Sullivan.
Yes.
Adams.
Yes.
Alley.
Yes.
Thank you. Motion passes. Next budget is the Plumbing Inspector, 1243, please.
The Plumbing Inspector, his line item, just the full-time salary, which is right now contractual, I guess, or is, yeah. He's supposed to be moving to a PSA. His position was taken out of the union, but for now, we've just budgeted as he would still be in the union from July 1, which is the highest step, the ADHC Step 6.
Thank you.
That's it for his budget. Everything else comes out of the Building Department budget.
Yeah, it looked rather simple.
Mr. President, pro temp, I move approval of the Plumbing Inspector budget as presented.
Second. Motion was made in second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, roll call, Madam City Clerk.
Bean.
Yes.
Beltrandi.
Yes.
Burns.
Yes.
Figgy.
Yes.
Flaherty.
No.
Harris.
Yes.
Matthews Kane.
Yes.
Mello.
Yes.
Morganelli.
No.
Oniski.
Yes.
Sullivan.
Yes.
Adams.
Yes.
Alley.
Yes.
Thank you. Motion passes. Next item is the Electrical Inspector, and that's 1245.
Okay, the Electrical Inspector, same as the Plumbing Inspector. He is also going to be going to a PSA in the upcoming months. That position also has been voted out of the union currently. We're keeping him at his current salary, which is the ADHC Step 6. He was getting a stipend from Southwick, but the MOA has been canceled from Southwick as of December 31, 2020.
Thank you. Any questions or comments?
I move approval of the Electric Inspector budget as presented.
Second. Motion made in second. A roll call, Madam City Clerk.
Bean.
Yes.
Beltrandi.
Yes.
Burns.
Yes.
Figgy.
Yes.
Flaherty.
No.
Harris.
Yes.
Matthews Kane.
Yes.
Mello.
Yes.
Morganelli.
No.
Oniski.
Yes.
Sullivan.
Yes.
Adams.
Yes.
Alley.
Yes.
Thank you. And I think you have.
192.
192 public buildings.
Public property.
Public property. That's close.
Starting with the first line item, our full-time salary employees, contractual, again. Moving down to the part-time hourly employees, one of them is contractual, so we're bound to the pay scale. The other one is our part-time custodian who comes in at night, closes up the building for us. I believe we gave him, I think, a small 1% or 2% raise to bring him up to the 16, 14 an hour for the 16 hours that he gives us a week. Our purchase of service account has gone up. This past year, because we've been down to the bare minimum with the contractual items that are in the purchase of service or get paid out of the purchase of service account, I haven't had any money to do much of anything around this building. And this past year, our sprinkler system needed some work to the tune of roughly $2,000, and Tammy in the purchasing department was gracious enough to cover the bill for me. So I'm hoping to get a little bit more meat in that budget so that I can pay for the items that need to be paid for when we do the maintenance and repairs here in the building. Obviously, I would like to do more to stay on top of the work that was done here, but can take that one piece at a time. But it would be helpful just to have the additional money just to cover the little minor things that go wrong that we have to fix on a yearly basis. The other contractual items are the elevator maintenance. We have braymen come for termites. We did find termites in the basement one year, so we've been treating for termites. Sprinkler and fire alarm testing, the boiler inspections, other miscellaneous maintenance, and the syn test uniforms for two of the employees. Our supply account, the same thing. It was increased a little bit to cover the cost and the rising cost of the cleaning supplies and the toiletries for City Hall and other maintenance supplies. That's pretty much it for that budget.
Thank you. Any questions? Counselor Flaherty.
Yep, thank you. So the 15, 5, that's the maintenance cost for the City Hall building? Is that the repair and maintenance?
Yes.
This building's worth like $10 million, isn't it? So 15,500 is not a lot of money to protect a $10 million building, and...
No, there's other things that I would like to do as far as maintenance is concerned, and I've talked about it with Brian and Farrett. Things such as like recocking all of the windows, refinishing the floors, which we did do one year. There was a little extra money that we had, so we had most of the floors refinished. The only floor we didn't have finished was countless chambers. Just little things like that that we want to stay on top of.
Any other questions, comments?
Mr. President, pro temp, I move approval of the public property and building budget as presented.
Second. Motion was made in second. A roll call, Madam City Clerk.
Bean.
Yes.
Beltrandi.
Yes.
Burns.
Yes.
Figgy.
Yes.
Flaherty.
No.
Harris.
Yes.
Matthews Kane.
Yes.
Mello.
Yes.
Morganelli.
No.
Oniski.
Yes.
Sullivan.
Yes.
Adams.
Yes.
Alley.
Yes.
Motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Nice job, and thoughts and prayers with you and your father.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda is the Planning Department. Mr. Vinsky, is he in the audience? Is he at his computer wanting to Zoom? Do I, I will entertain a motion to go out of order.
So move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion was made in second to go out of order. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, let's go with Counsel on Aging, Ms. Gorman.
Okay, well, this is, this is pretty straightforward. There are no... I am who? Tina Gorman, Counsel on Aging, sorry. Sorry, Counselor Bean. I'm just ready to dive right into this. Okay, so on the salary side, there are no new positions, and everything that was on there is just contracted contractual raises, so that was an additional $10,640. So then we switched over to the supply and purchase of service side, and we were able to, we always go through the budget and kind of look at what did we budget last year, what did we not spend, where do we have some extra, and then we adjust. So in this case, we had some places where we had overbudgeted and we had some extra, but then there were some other things that came up that we didn't have budgeted. We didn't really have anything for electrical. We didn't have anything for plumbing, and, you know, the building is five and a half years old now, so we are starting to have some of those things. So we factored all of that in, and we're still able to save $5,305. So the total extra from the year, previous year, is $5,836. So for me, that's almost level funding. So it's really just salaries that are set and supplies and purchase of service, which we were able to save some money on, and that's it. There's nothing new in this budget. There are no new positions. There are no changes in positions. That's it.
Any questions? Counselor Flaherty.
Just a comment. I think you're the first one to come in and said you're having a lower budget than last year.
Well, it's not lower than last year. It was lower in certain areas, but it's, total-wise, it's a little bit higher. But that's because of the salary contracts. But other than that, yeah.
Thank you. Thanks for everything you guys did. I know it was a long year for you guys.
It's been a very long year.
Dramatic changes in services.
And it's still not over. Counselor Beltrandi.
Thank you. Just a comment. Thank you for everything you do there.
You're welcome.
You're one of the people that always seems to do more with less. I don't know how you do it, but every year, you seem to just bring it to the table, so thank you very much.
Thank you. Thanks for recognizing that. We do our best.
Any other questions? I have a couple. Do you anticipate an increase in the number of seniors with the last census?
Absolutely. So my best guess that, from the numbers that we're getting from the Executive Office of Elder Affairs, we are right, we have been for, the 2010 census was we were at 8,000. We're over 10,000. That's what the new census is going to show for those 60 and older. So, yeah, that's a big jump.
Big jump.
Yeah.
And do we know what the per senior allotment's going to be?
For, right now, for the state formula allocation, they're trying to level fund that at $12 per elder, but that's based on, that's still based on the 2010 census. I think what we're being told will happen is if they start to use the new census numbers, they'll reduce that per elder, but what that'll mean for us is that our total number, our total budget that we're getting from the state should be the same as last year. And again, you know, we're always doing more with less, so we've already, I've already factored that in, so we should be okay.
I was hoping we'd get additional funds because of the increase in numbers.
I don't think that's, I don't think that's going to happen, although there are some other line items in the state budget, protective services, there are some other things that are, we won't see that for our department, but it will benefit our seniors, so.
Thank you. Any other questions?
With that, I move approval of the Counsel on Aging's budget as presented.
Second. Motion was made in second. A roll call, Madam City Clerk.
Bean.
Yes.
Beltrandi.
Yes.
Burns.
Yes.
Figgy.
Yes.
Flaherty.
No.
Harris.
Yes.
Matthews Kane.
Yes.
Mello.
Yes.
Morganelli.
No.
Oniski.
Yes.
Sullivan.
Yes.
Adams.
Yes.
Alley.
Yes.
Sorry, Counsel, what was that?
Yes.
Yes, okay. I think the hearing's going. Thank you.
She has that service down at the center. She can...
Next time I'm there, I'm going to check them out.
It's a tough rule.
$12 a year doesn't trouble you.
Spend you $12 wisely.
Thank you, Director Gorman, for that most informative presentation.
Much more fun to be live.
Our next on the agenda is veterans. That's 1543. Director Barnes, welcome.
Hi, Julie Barnes, Veteran Services. Thank you for taking time to review our budget. I know you all work very hard to ensure the city is run effectively and efficiently. If you ever have any questions about veteran services, you're always welcome to stop by the office or call or email. I had sent out two spreadsheets earlier in the week, and one was my 2021 actual budget showing how we distributed funds allocated to each account, and then the other spreadsheet shows my 2022 proposed budget. The details on that are the same amount of the line items that you receive from the city. At the bottom of the 2021 budget, I just wanted to call your attention, maybe you can go back and look at it if you didn't see it, there's some stats at the bottom. The client load changes from month to month in our department for many reasons. In 2021, we had, January 2021, we had 76 clients. As of this month, I'm managing 83 clients, so it goes up and down monthly. Even so, I have reduced the amount in the Veterans Benefits budget line because I was able to get 31 clients signed up for Mass Health Buy-In this past year. The income ceiling for that program was raised last year, and many of my clients became eligible for the state to start paying 100% of the Medicare Part B. This saves over $35,000 a year for the city and for my budget. And just a reminder, 75% to 100%, depending of the veterans' budget benefits, are reimbursed quarterly by the state.
Thank you. Any questions for the veterans' budget?
Seeing no questions or cuts, Mr. President, pro temp, I move approval of the veterans' budget as presented.
Second. Motion was made in seconded. Roll call, Madam City Clerk.
Bean.
Yes.
Beltrandi.
Yes.
Burns.
Yes, thank you, Julie.
Figgy.
Yes, and thank you.
Flaherty.
No.
Harris.
Yes, thanks.
Matthews Kane.
Yes.
Mello.
Yes.
Morganelli.
Yes.
Oniski.
Yes.
Sullivan.
Yes.
Adams.
Yes.
Alley.
Yes.
Thank you. Motion passes. Thank you. Got that mic working good. Damn, that's good. Got that mic working good. Damn, that's good. Uh, next is Community Development, 1-1-8-2. Thank you for adjusting the mic.
I'll try to speak into it.
That might be out of your job description, but well done.
Yep. Thank you, Mr. President, members of the council. Peter Miller, Director of Community Development, uh, here to present the budgets for, uh, the Office of Community Development, the Off-Street Parking Commission, and the Planning Department. I'm happy to, to report that our, uh, budget has been, uh, generally, uh, level funded. We've asked for, uh, working on the, um, Community Development side, uh, first, the 1182 was, as asked. We are about 1% up from 299,000 to 301,000 is the ask. Those are, those increases are primarily related to, um, uh, the, the, uh, collective bargaining agreements for the employees. Everything else is, for the most part, uh, level funded, uh, as was requested by the department. Nothing was generally, uh, cut from it. Uh, we are, uh, our, um, our expense accounts are a little bit, uh, I mean, they're a little more discretionary than most departments would have. For the most part, places like the Treasurer have specific bills that have purchased the services of, uh, postage, things along those lines. Ours is a little bit more fluid as it relates to what kinds of projects that we're looking to, to fund in, uh, a given year. Uh, for the most part, our purchase of services is, uh, delved into, uh, really just a couple of different buckets. Um, and there's a, uh, expense, uh, sheet, uh, on here that talks through the expense side. Uh, and what we generally have felt that we're spending money on are, are, on appraisals and on environmental review reports, uh, on projects that the city is, uh, investigating. For instance, we will do, uh, we, I mean, if we go, we go through any kinds of, uh, of, uh, projects where we're looking to sell municipal land or purchase land from someone, we will order appraisals to do that, obviously. It's part of the requirement. Um, environmental reviews are, so we're doing the due diligence required prior to entering into any agreement or taking title for concerns that, uh, may have predated any interest that we might have had in the property. Um, we put in, uh, marketing expenses, uh, for the community. Uh, on Monday night, we had a, uh, what's called, we had a public information meeting for the Rapid Recovery Program, uh, which is a state grant that we received from the state, which is basically, state grant from the state. But the, uh, we, basically, the, it's a technical assistance program, uh, that the state is paying for a consultant for the community to figure out how best to come out of COVID, and it's specifically related to, uh, the downtown, uh, area, which is, uh, really the, the, I mean, every, every part of the city was certainly impacted, but the downtown was specifically impacted. You can go down there and you see the, the vacancies that have happened, longtime businesses that have gone out, whether it was just COVID that made that happen, or if it was other things, uh, that, that contributed as well. It still gets to a state where we have, uh, a long way to go to, to, to get, uh, the business community, the small business community, back to a, a position where they feel strong and where they're going to thrive in years to come. So the Rapid Recovery Program, uh, was, was built to come up with suggestions as to how, how we best, uh, could, as a city, help through, uh, that process. The reason I talk about that is the, the marketing line item. Uh, that was one of the things that came up, and as we, we put this in, obviously, well prior to Monday's meeting, but, uh, the, the biggest, uh, uh, comment from the public was that Westfield needs to, we need to, we need to market our, our, ourselves. This $1,500 isn't necessarily going to get us everywhere we need to be. We have an additional $5,000 that's in the Economic Development line item for our department, which says for Turd Pike Industrial, but, uh, we've, we've been partnering primarily with Mass Development to pay for that. Uh, so I would, I would be looking to, uh, to do some level of marketing for the community, uh, refreshing any of our materials that we've put together, targeting, uh, appropriate outreach, whether it's through, um, uh, any kind of, um, web service or, you know, uh, putting our, getting the videos and all those kinds of things together and put out. So, um, we, we think that, that especially coming out of this, uh, positioning ourselves, spending some money on marketing the community and, uh, the small businesses would be, uh, or just generally what the community has to offer would be, uh, a wise choice. Uh, we also have, uh, event support. Um, our, for whatever reason, I think it's probably because it doesn't really fit anywhere else, our department is uh, the place where, uh, uh, agencies like the Westfield, like Westfield on Weekends, or Run Westfield, or, uh, Artworks come for the public side of, of the costs. So, uh, we are, uh, we are hopeful that we'll be able to assist, uh, these agencies with, you know, the things that, the outside things that are, are necessary for these free public events. And the, the primary thing that we're talking about is these, these need to be free events for us to participate. They can't be, we're not asking, we're not going to support any events that require a charge uh, for admission or anything along those lines, but it's, it's the, uh, the great things like porta potties, or tents, or stages, or whatever those little things are that, that make it necessary to make these, um, these things work. Now, that's what we, we spend money on. Design and engineering services, we, if we come up with concepts of things that we want to try to do, uh, we'll, we'll hire, uh, hire somebody to try to help us professionally design something that, that, that looks, uh, looks, looks okay. Uh, one of the things that I'm thinking about right now is, uh, if, if, uh, if, if the money stays this way, I would be looking to, um, potentially draw, have some sort of a concept drawn up for the, the Elm Street, uh, parking lot area. Uh, the Westfield Redevelopment Authority is still working to move forward on the large project, but, um, in the interim, uh, while the, the real estate market tries to figure itself out in the commercial side of things, we, uh, I think we would be smart to think about ways that we could beautify that, that area and really utilize it in some capacity other than as a parking lot and a overgrown grass field. Um, so we're thinking about, uh, trying to program that in a, like, one of those tactical urbanism kinds of ways, and uh, part of that is, um, is requires some design work and some, uh, some vision that, uh, that needs to be put on paper that, that we don't necessarily have uh, at, at the city, city level. Um, the rest of it is pretty straightforward, the public notices, cell phones, things along those lines. Rest of it, office supplies are, the rest of our expenses are very basic. The biggest one is the Pioneer Valley Planning Commission. Pioneer Valley Planning Commission is a, uh, a statutory, uh, payment that we make for, uh, services that we receive from the Pioneer Valley Planning Commission. That's statistical, uh, some planning, um, all, the, the administration of the, uh, Municipal Planning Organization, the, the MPO, the TIP, the Federal TIP Program for, uh, Engineering Services and those things. That's, that $7,000 is the city's, uh, responsibility for that, and that's based on population. Uh, really, and generally, that, that's the Community Development budget. I'm happy to talk about what we do. I know that we, it's, it's been a long time since we've been here, but I know there's other people waiting. I'm happy at any point to, to sit and talk through what it is that we do all year long. I know we don't get to do that as often as we'd like, and it certainly was that way, uh, for the past year. Um, it's been a real challenge for everybody to get together and, and talk through these things, but I'm certainly happy to answer any questions you have on that budget.
Thank you. Uh, Counselor Bean and Counselor Sullivan.
I'll yield to the Finance Committee member.
Um, sure. I don't, I'll support the budget. I have no problem with the budget. Just a question on ARPAP funds potentially. I know the, the definition of economic development is pretty broad, um, and not a whole lot of guidance there, but one of the programs that is available is continuing small business support. Has there been a discussion within the administration about using some of the monies for that purposes?
I did. So, yeah, so I, I did, I did raise that question, or I raised that possibility with, uh, the, the purchasing agent and with the mayor uh, in, uh, in communications that we've had over the course of the past couple of weeks. I think we're still working through most of the guidance as to what it is that, that, that will be eligible. I've, I mean, I've been following, and Holyoke put out an RFP that looks exactly like their CDBG RFP for the ARPAP funds, and I don't know that that's something that we necessarily would want to do, but, uh, I certainly would advocate for, uh, looking to, to allocate those resources in a way that has a broader impact. Um, I mean, things along, I mean, this kind of money obviously doesn't come around often. Our CDBG allocation every year is about $380,000. Of that, only about 220 of it is programmable to things like economic development or infrastructure, or, uh, things that you can really make a, a dent in, and we're do, we, we do our housing rehab program, so we're down to just probably $50,000 or $60,000 a year that we're able to do on economic development. I think that this would be a great opportunity to, to be able to provide bigger awards, right? I mean, our awards, if we try to spread the money out, $10,000 or $15,000 doesn't go very far
Right.
uh, for a lot of these things, particularly, like, like a facade improvement program. Um, we've, we've tried them in the past. We've done them successfully in some ways, but, um, if you really wanted to make a difference on a facade, you're probably talking more, and this is all, everything's going to be uh, federal wage rates. It's not going to be hire a guy from the, off the street and do it. It's going to be federal wage rates. So doing a real facade improvement program, or doing any kind of a real infrastructure, uh, plan for, uh, business assistance is, is going to, it's, it's going to reach you into the 40s and 50s to do something significant that has an impact. Um, and so we, and we really could do one a year if we were to do it without ARPAP funds, but maybe, I mean, if, if it's something that we've determined to go forward with, I'd be happy to.
Well, if, if, if I was asked, I'd certainly support any expenditures from, from ARPAP money that would support the downtown businesses, the small businesses, because they're going to be hurting for longer than just today. So, commentary, not a question. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Counselor Bean.
Uh, two, two things. One, uh, you mentioned the marketing piece. I know, uh, a couple of years ago, we, we sat with the GNE and that commission to try to get more marketing money. I, I'm not sure about last year, but the year before, there was additional funds. Was that ever allocated on the marketing side? I, I, I know it's not in the mayor's budget now, but I, I guess I wouldn't know. I doubt they split it up. That's why I think.
Yeah, so, yeah, the first time we did, so that, we did this about, it was three years ago, um, was when we did the, the, it was the Go Westfield Campaign. If people remember, it was, we did the Go Westfield Campaign, and it was a, uh, it was $5,000 each from the city of Westfield, or the, uh, Westfield Bank, uh, provided a, uh, stipend for it, and the Westfield Gas and Electric, Whip City Fiber provided an additional $5,000 for it. We did, we went, we, we spent through that money, um, and we, we created, we created a video, which is now dated in some capacity, but there's a lot to it that from the B-roll side and even from the A-roll side that still, uh, still translates. So we have some, I think we, I mean, to, to recreate the video side of it, I don't think it would cost us a whole heck of a lot of money just to, to cut out a couple of different things and, and add some of the new things that we have going on to it, and trying to, trying to get to a point where it's not, it doesn't get dated. I think that's, that's really what we would like to, to try to, try to do. And then certainly, uh, I mean, and I, I'm not a marketing professional by any means, but, but doing some, some level of outreach to, um, to outside of Westfield would certainly be, uh, a goal that we would have. Um, it's not an easy thing. It's, it's hard to... It, it, in a lot of ways, in a lot of ways, it's hard to get, to spend municipal money on these kinds of, like, marketing. The audit, the audit requirements and the acceptance of certain state laws makes it, makes it difficult in a lot of ways to do it, but we, we certainly, I think if we were to to put together something similar, another $5,000 community effort, it would, would do something for us.
Well, you definitely need boots on the ground to help, you know, market this, the city moving forward. And the other, other piece was, and, and you and I have talked about this before, and I think it's been kind of an ongoing thing, as far as the Off-Street Parking Commission.
Yep.
Your opinion, or what do you, do you think there's, uh, not a way, but is there, is there responsibilities there that couldn't be pushed off to another commission? And to disband the Off-Street? Because I'm not, I'm not seeing, you know, they don't have a budget, right?
Yep.
We're just seeing the, the, is there any real authority there?
Yeah, I mean, I, I mean, it, I think, I mean, I think it, while, while it's another, that's where I was. I was just at a, uh, the Off-Street Parking Commission meeting upstairs. We, we, uh, it's, it has, had been challenging to end up having meetings with, with the group. Uh, we, we've cut it from a seven-member board to a three-member board. Um, thanks, thanks to the mayor and to Counselor Matthews Kane. We will have a third member, so we'll finally be up to uh, a full roster. Um, hopefully, if, if you're able to, uh, confirm that, that new name that's coming in on Thursday, uh, hopefully by our July meeting, we'll have a full roster and some new energy to, uh, to move forward. I, I mean, I think there's a place for it. If for no other reason than it's, there's really no other board that has solely in its interest downtown. Um, so it's, it's almost like it could be, it could be shifted and maybe changed in ordinance to uh, a downtown advisory board that includes parking, or something along those lines, rather than just off-street parking. But there's really no other place for, that has as its sole focus downtown. That's an actual official city board or agency. Um, so I think, I think it has, it has a place. Um, some of the, uh, the, so one of the things that we've done is we've, the administration of it, it had, we've, we've changed that back in a lot, I mean, it goes, we're playing tennis, pickleball with it a little bit, I guess, but, uh, it's gone now from, uh, my department had previously had it, had, uh, the sale of stickers, and that was an administrative, uh, task that we had on the third floor as of about a month and a half ago. Uh, that is now in the, uh, Business License Division of the City Clerk's Office. Uh, that transition has gone very smoothly so far. Uh, people have, now that the old building is open again, people are, their, their, their office is much more accessible than mine is. Mine is on the third floor. If you wanted to, you go up the elevator, you go up another, uh, another mini elevator, across the top, down another one. So having this in a place, uh, that, that's a little bit more accessible is number one. That, that's a great thing. Number two, it's, there, it's a very customer-oriented office. Um, so it's worked out pretty well, uh, and they have a, um, they actually have institutional knowledge where they, they handled this for years prior, uh, and it's already starting to show some, uh, some fruits. Uh, we're, we have some old, um, some old scoping of, uh, of maintenance, uh, actual, uh, documents that we have out there that we can, can look at to, to try to get a real maintenance program happening in the lots, so that we're not seeing overgrown weeds. Uh, right now, we're basically, we're emptying, we're emptying trash barrels, but we don't have, uh, we don't have staff or contractors that, uh, that regularly weed or hit those, hit those things, but, but we have some, some ability now to, to, to potentially, uh, contract that out.
Counselor Mello.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President, pro temp. Um, it, so does that mean that the parking tasks that you mentioned in your budget have been moved? Or do you still have some there?
Uh, I, so I still have professional, um, responsibilities for the policy portion of it. So, uh, me, I don't have, we don't have administrative responsibility upstairs for the, the sale of permits or the, um, or the, uh, you know, things like payroll or the bills. Those things have moved to the clerk's office, and we have, and one of the things that you'll see in here is, uh, we, we, we have the ability to cut back in, if we needed to, we would cut back in, in our, in our clerk, in our clerk position.
Right, that's why I'm, I'm, that's why I'm asking. I'm wondering if that clerk position could be used to help the Flood Control Commission coordinate between all the different agencies? Is that, I mean, right, didn't they say they were part of that?
I don't know that I'm the right, I don't know that I'm the right location for it, but I, I mean, the, the, the money, I, I mean, I, it, it is a potential that, that, that there's a zero sum that you might be able to get. I don't know that our office is the place for it.
I don't, I don't know if anybody knows where the place is for it, but my, my point is that, um, that somebody needs to coordinate between the federal and the state entities, and the Army Corps of Engineers, and the city, and the engineer, and if you have this in your budget, I'm just wondering if a clerk could be.
Yeah, I mean, I, I mean, we could, I mean, there's the potential that we could, we could pick up clerical roles for the things, some of the things like the, the bills, or some of the things that I know that, that Al and, uh, Jack have come around talking about. I mean, there's, there, there may be, I mean, right now, the position's vacant, so is that, it was, there was a position that actually handled it. That position is vacant. We would have, I mean, we would have, have to fill that if that were to be the case, but it's, uh, I mean, we could do that part of it. As far as the coordination, I mean, that, that feels a more, I mean, that feels like a professional level of, of, uh, of responsibility. If you're, if you're trying to interpret what you need to get from the, uh, from FEMA, or from the NRC, or whoever it is that you're working with, that feels, feels a little bit more professional than what a clerk's job would do.
I think, I think they're looking for someone to be able to answer the phone and email in the daytime, I think, is just what, someone to, to field, connect to people. But I, I.
It's certainly, I mean, if, if the money stays there and it's something that, that, uh, the administration decides needs a place, then I'm more than willing to listen.
Thank you very much.
Any other questions? Counselor Flaherty.
Yep, thank you. And thanks for Counselor Sullivan asking some of my questions. I, I agree about the ARPAP money, and we should pursue it as, as in the broadest terms possible to make, help small businesses. I, I thought the CDBG money was going up. Is it staying, is that 380?
No, we received, the CDBG money we received, we received, uh, about $500,000 from the CARES Act. Uh, so we were, so in fiscal 19, we had our regular allocation, uh, which we, we, uh, expended the same way we generally do. Then we had a first allocation from the CARES Act, uh, which was in May of '20, uh, that we, that was about, I think that one was $217,000, I believe it was. And that, that money we spent, or we allocated, and we assisted about 25 small businesses with, uh, emergency business assistance grants, and we provided, uh, provided funding to the Boys and Girls Club to do the, uh, to, to do, uh, remote learning bags for, for some of their members, and we provided some funds for the emergency food pantry. So we did that with the first round of funds. The second round of funds is out there, uh, that was another $300,000, and about $220,000. And about 220 of it, we programmed to the Emergency Rental Assistance. We partnered with Valley Opportunity Council for eviction, eviction, I'm trying to think of the word, but prevention, eviction prevention. So we did 217 for that. And then we had added another 60 to the Business Assistance Program that we had already. So, so we still have about 50,000 left in Business Assistance. That is still, we, we just did a grant about a week and a half ago with Santiago's. So we're still getting them. It's getting a little bit more challenging to do the Business Assistance Grants, only because the caveat is you need to continue to show a COVID impact. And as we come out, it's, it's getting harder to show the COVID impact, other than by showing just your bottom line from, from calendar year '19 to calendar year '20. So we're, we still have some money to go with that, just getting a little bit tougher to, to qualify businesses for it. And we still have about 150 left in the Emergency Rental Assistance Program. Had I known that the state and federal government were going to put as many resources into emergency rental assistance as they have, because that's part, part of the issue now is there is a, there is a plethora of competing programs that, that are out there for eviction prevention. I probably wouldn't have programmed quite as much. We, we looked at a study from the Mass, or the Metro Boston Planning Commission that said that there was about a $450,000 need in Westfield for, to, to stave off evictions. And so we said, oh, we got 220 of it, let's, let's try to fill that gap. And we're, it's, it's not an easy, it's not an easy sell. People are, people are finding less, less challenging programs to qualify for. So our, the paperwork that's required for ours, because we're a CDBG and we just are really trying to be diligent about the documentation side of it, our program's a little tougher than some of the others are. So, I mean, I'll reevaluate probably in September or October. And if we have some money left over, I will probably try to figure out, like you said, there's some, there's a little bit broader of a definition for how to, what a COVID impact is.
Is there any of that money?
So I'm trying to think about, I may try to reprogram it somewhere else.
Is any of it available for businesses in town that were ordered to shut down but still have giant tax bills to pay? Is there any way that...
So tax, so tax bills are not eligible. That's one of the things that's written into the statute, is we can't pay ourselves with federal money. We need to be, so we try to work around it. We try to, like, most of what we're doing is we're paying four months' rent, like, back rent, or whatever it is, or we can even forward, like, going forward, we can pay rent. We're trying to do those things that will help free up money so they can pay taxes. But we can't, like, it can't be like your, your meal tax bill to the state. That's not an eligible fund. It's basically utilities, which again, that was a little bit of a challenge, because it's, we have a municipal...
So business is for business. So businesses that are having trouble can get four months of rent and utilities?
Correct.
If they go through this program?
So, yeah, so they can. So there's, I mean, it's, it's still, it's another carrot stick thing. You have to commit to retaining jobs. So you, you have, I mean, some people aren't in the position where they can say that six months from now, I'm going to be able to have retained that guy. And we have the ability to eat it in some capacity, but upfront, the word has to be that, that you're going to, you're signing a piece of paper that says that you will be retaining, you have five, five employees right now, you'll have five employees six months from now. And some people just aren't, some businesses just aren't able to make that commitment. I think that's, that's probably been the biggest, that and, and just the paperwork side. Those are the two things that, that are, that some of the businesses have looked at and said, I don't know that this is for me.
And I know you talked to the Chamber BCA C Committee, and you're going to come back again sometime soon, but one of the issues that you brought up that I don't think everybody understands is that some of these things have a local match for the company. So when they're doing a facial improvement on the outside of their building, they might have to pay 50% of it, but at the federal labor rate.
Right.
So their out-of-pocket is higher than if they were to just hire Joe Schmo, the local electrician or contractor, because the rates are so much higher.
Yeah, that was, so that was, that was our old, so that was our old model. Our old model, the first model we did was a 50-50 match, and that was before me, that was probably eight or 10 years ago. When, when I did, when, when I had it and I tried it again, I heard the same thing from a bunch of businesses. We went to a two-to-one, like, or a one-to-two match. So we put 3,000, we put six in, you have to put three in. So we tried to do that. That still didn't get a lot of willing applicants, because you're still dealing with the federal wage rate. I mean, I, that's, that's why, that's why to me, some of this, the ARBA money, if, if there's some, if there's some level of it, you could get to a point where it's, you could get to 80/20, you could get to, like, something that makes it more viable. You could even do 100 if we really wanted to. It's just a matter of, you want to have, have some skin in the game, but not to a point where it's a, almost a penalty for trying to do, to use government funds. But the other wage rates, the federal wage rates, that's a huge challenge for every project that we do. Anytime that you, we put more than, the level's low, if you put $2,000 of federal money into a project, this hasn't been updated since 1968 or something like that. It's $2,000 then. It was a lot different than what 2,000 is now. And they have, there just hasn't been an adjustment in that number, so. And we get, we get monitored and, and our, our files are reviewed to make sure that we're requiring that.
Are you going to do a separate budget for a CPA?
I, so I don't have CPA, CPA wasn't on the list, but I could talk about it.
So the number's going up a little bit. Is there more flexibility for recreational things next year? Is it looking like there's going to be enough money around?
I, I mean, I was, so generally, when the, when the CPA comes through, I mean, it comes through with the 10%, that goes to each of the three categories. So housing, community housing, historic and open space. So you have those three that take, I think, and I don't have the numbers in front of you, but usually it's about 50,000 each, something like that. And then, so that's 10%, you get 500, so you end up with 3, 450 or so for, for any other kinds of projects that are out there. So I would, yeah, I don't think that, they haven't, they haven't pre-approved or seen any projects that, that have come forward that, that would eat into the lion's share of that. So recreation's a potential. There's, I'm sure that there'll be some money available for recreational projects if it's required. I know I read the article this morning about the skate park.
Yep.
That was in the paper today. The challenge with the skate park will be, if they were, and I'll say, I'm going to have this meeting with the chairman of the Parking Rec in a couple of days, but if they do it, you're, you spend the money there, you're, you're protecting that as parkland in perpetuity. And if it's at the school, if it's on a school department piece of property, we've lived that nightmare already, so.
I'm thinking tennis, pickleball, basketball, hockey.
Yeah, yeah, so those, I mean, yeah.
Track and field, Ralph, track and field.
There you go. So, yeah, I mean, I, I think of a couple of places, and again, this isn't really, it's not fully, it's not fully my department, but I know I help them out on some of these things regularly. But I think there's a place at Paper Mill Playground for, like, there's the old hockey, floor hockey area, or there's, there's, there are places I think you could do some additional...
So who can initiate that? Can we initiate it as an advocate, or does the, like, the PTO have to do it, or?
What's that?
Does a PTO have to do it if it's on school property? Or can we do it as a council representing the people?
I think it can come from anybody, so long as the school department endorses it. I think you need to have the school department's endorsement to, or the school committee's endorsement to prevent, to do any encumbrance or expenditure on any of their properties. So I think it's probably got to go, I mean, somebody could, could be the proponent for it, but you're going to have to go to them first before you apply to CPA.
Great, thank you.
Any other questions? Counselor Morganelli.
Thank you, Mr. Phil. Hey, Pete, thanks for being here, and I appreciate all the notes and the handout. What's your, what's your dream budget? Let's say money is no obstacle, and you had a dream budget, okay? What would that number be? And what would you do with that money to better Westfield? I'm just curious, hypothetically, I'm just curious.
I mean, I, I don't know that I could put a, put a number specifically on it. I mean, I think, I, I think primarily from a project's perspective, and obviously from projects comes people to, to do the project. So I think that's part of the issue, is, is having the people that are able to, to do the, to do everything that it is that we ever want to do. But my, I mean, my idea, my world, the, my ideal would be to, to try to, try to work forward. Elm Street is really my, that's, the dream that I would have is for, for, for the Elm Street to really have, to done the facade, like, every facade improved, every building with an awning on it, you know? That's, that's really the, the general dream budget that I would have, is how do we help these people? How do we help the downtown property owners get to a point where they have the financial capability to, to make improvements on their own buildings? Whether it's to accessibility for upstairs, the, the shared elevator at Piccolo's or the, whatever it was, when, whatever it is now, the Myers. Things like that, that can be shared among a, a group of people to, to bring additional activity. That's, that's, that would be my, that. And the other, the other thing, I mean, I would, I would love to see, I, we, we need to have some sort of a, a public benefit happen on the, on the intermodal site, or on the, the Elm Street Urban Renewal Plan site. We've been talking, we've, every, every, every proposal that we received when we went out last time was, there's a short, there's a shortfall. I mean, the, the money doesn't work on that property without some level of subsidy. And whether that subsidy is for, for, through, in the form of a TIF, or if it's in the form of, of tax credits for housing, or whatever it is, there's going to need to be one in order to have a building built that's going to be profitable for whoever builds it. And participating in that, it's not so much something that would go into this budget right now, but it's a financial concern for the city, whether it's in, whether it's in deferred revenue or a revenue that we've, we've left on the table from our side, or if it's in an actual investment, if we're going to build something. I mean, we, we had a WR meeting the other day, and my, the, it basically comes down to a couple of different things. It's either somebody who's doing it as a, a public benefit project, if, and, and isn't really, is worried about the bottom line, and I don't see that happening. Or it's, right now, the only subsidy that's available for urban development or for building develop, private development is through the housing programs. So it's going to be something along those lines. Or it's going to be a public facility. That's, those are the places where you're going to find money. And it's, or, it's, I mean, the only thing that I can think of is, is, at this point, I mean, obviously, we've talked, police station, fire station, those things are out on the table. The only other public use for, for property that we don't have is, is really recreation. It's like an indoor rec center, or whatever it might be. That's, that's the only other thing I can think of, and that's not going to make it, I've talked to Tammy about it, that's not going to make it on the capital plan. But those, that Elm Street, I mean, that's a long answer to, Elm Street is where I would spend every dime that I had if I had, had the ability to spend it. And then, then moving out the spokes from there to the neighborhoods, to Jefferson Street, or to George Street, or whatever, just building from the outside. And that's the only way that it's going to work.
Thanks, Pete. Any other questions?
Yeah, I just, I have two questions.
Budget-related?
Can you, can you recap the, the Cross Street Playground, the, the line item on there, and just tell us what, because there was grant money for that?
Yep.
And the city had to put up some money for it?
Yeah, so the city put some money in.
You just recap?
Yeah, so, so we received, we, we received a park grant from the state for $400,000. The city put, or the CPA put 350 into it, I think is the number, something like, it was some 300 or 350. And the city put 267, 267,000. And then, and that line item, that, that line item there is, is what the city's money that we, we got from free cash was for the program. And we've, we've stayed under budget at this point. We're about 98% complete. We have a couple, a couple of loose ends that we still need to be tied up with the project, but we're very pleased, and I'm, for better or worse, I'm at Cross Street five nights a week. I love it. I love everything about it. But I, my favorite part is seeing, like, being able to watch a game, and my six-year-old goes over and plays on that playground with 12 of his friends. And it's, it's really brought a new life to that, that parcel. It feels like a playground again, it feels like a park that, that can be fully used. And we're, we're just about to the end of that one. We'll have to take a break before the next one, I think, just to get back in line from the state, but I'm sure there will be people who have ideas what the next one should be.
Okay, any other questions?
Yes, just, can you just explain the overtime in that department? Because there's so few employees, so I'm, I'm just wondering how, how there's $2,000 in the budget for overtime?
Yeah, so we, we pay, the overtime here is, it's basically the, the coverage for planning board meetings. Why it's in 1182, why it's in community development, I don't know, but it's, it's Chris's coverage for, she's the secretary for planning board. And I'm guessing that they're, they spend pretty much all of that. Their meetings are pretty long.
Thank you.
Anything else? You're welcome. Any other questions?
With that, Mr. President, Pro Temp, I move approval of the community development budget as submitted, as presented.
Second. Motion made in second, roll call, please.
Bean?
Yes.
Beltrandi?
Yes.
Burns?
Yes.
Figgy?
Yes.
Flaherty?
No.
Harris?
Yes.
Matthews-Kane?
Yes.
Mello?
Yes.
Morganelli?
No.
Oniski?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
Ally?
Yes.
Motion passes, thank you.
Briefly, the Planning Department, please. Planning Department, it's pretty much, it's what you see, it's staff and a couple of supplies. You will be, you'll notice that from the, from the sheet that there was an ask for $125,000 for the master plan. That was, was cut from this budget, but you will also see on tomorrow's agenda, there's an ask for free cash to do that master plan. Jay will be the city staff assigned to, to drive the bus on that. Certainly, I will participate, but he'll, it'll be his, his thing. The number that, that's associated with, and I don't know why I bother telling you now, because you'll get it next week, but it's, it's based on what the Chicopee Master Plan process is right now. They're about four or five months into theirs. And that's the, kind of the going rate for what a, a master plan for an entire municipality is. Just for, for scoping perspective, the downtown plan that we did 10 years ago was about $83,000. So this is, it's right about in line, and this is, this is the whole city.
Any questions?
I move approval of the Planning Department budget as presented.
Second. Motion made in second, roll call, Madam City Court.
Bean?
Yes.
Beltrandi?
Yes.
Burns?
Yes.
Figgy?
Yes.
Flaherty?
No.
Harris?
Yes.
Matthews-Kane?
Yes.
Mello?
Yes.
Morganelli?
No.
Oniski?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
Ally?
Yes.
Motion passes, thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Purchasing.
I didn't see the agenda. I feel like I prepared it, but it's, and that one's the same, and it's pretty much, uh, we, we did request a raise for the enforcement officer to, to maintain Massachusetts minimum wage. It's not something that's required of the city, but I think it's a smart, uh, smart thing for trying to maintain an employee who's doing a difficult job. Um, and then the other thing, the only other, uh, ask in there was, um, for some, um, for some maintenance funds for, potentially for, uh, camera projects, uh, in the off-street lots, to try to stop the illegal dumping that's happening, particularly in Franklin Street Lot, but also in, uh, uh, the Reader 3 Lot off of School Street. Those are really two pretty problematic places, and we, it's, and it's every week I get, I call the DPW to ask to pick it up, and, um, it just grows faster than the weeds in the, in the parking lots, which grow fast.
Any questions?
Mr. President, pro temp, I move approval of the off-street parking budget as presented.
Second.
Motion made in second. Roll call, please.
Bean?
Yes.
Beltrandi?
Yes.
Burns?
Yes.
Figgy?
Yes.
Flaherty?
No.
Harris?
Yes.
Matthews Kane?
Yes.
Mello?
Yes.
Morgan Alley?
No.
Oniski?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
Alley?
Yes.
Motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Guys?
I know that's gonna be, I know that's gonna be a tough act to follow, but if anybody can do it, it'll be you, Tammy.
Dude, I actually said that over there. I gotta follow him. Um, Tammy Teft, uh, Chief Procurement Officer for the city. Um, I thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak about the budget, although, um, it's pretty much the same stuff that you guys see every year. Um, the raises, obviously, um, are contractual for the employees. Um, there are small increases and some, um, changes throughout the budget. Um, our, you know, obviously, G and E costs are, go up every year. Um, we've been seeing a little bit more of a steadier, um, stability for that, on those bills, but I do still see increases, so I've budgeted a little bit more for that. Um, we were able to, um, budget a little bit more for our repair and maintenance of the buildings, so Brian's really been trying hard to be proactive with the maintenance versus reactive. Uh, so I was able to ask for, um, an additional $30,000. Normally, we level fund that at $100,000, so, um, you see that this year it's $130,000. He's hoping to do a lot more with the EMS, um, so much more energy management, um, projects. We have the green communities, and we're supposed to be putting in a match to that, so, um, he's hoping to do a little bit more this year, or this coming year, with that stuff. Um, he was able this past year to really update a lot of the, um, AC projects, um, so airports, um, police station. Um, so he has been trying to click off some of the projects, um, but with $100,000 or $130,000, it's not a lot to, to really delve into the buildings, so, um, so that's, that's kind of it. The other thing, the other big, you know, ticket item, obviously, is our insurance costs. Um, we are seeing, we got Maya, um, had sent us an increase of about 4.7, um, on our premium this year. Um, they had been leveling it at like a 0% to 1% increase, and this year we're seeing a 4.7. Um, I was able to save a little bit money this past year on the insurance, because some of the increases actually didn't come in until mid-year, so we didn't really have to spend the full year of the increase. However, those increases will be happening, um, next year. Other than that, I mean, there's not a lot of meat and potatoes in my budget. Um, you know, $1,500 for supplies, a thousand of that goes to postage, um, ink and tape and all that. Um, so that's, that's pretty much it for my actual budget. Um, obviously, you know, I oversee quite a lot more stuff, um, than my budget actually appears, so, um, I can answer any questions.
Thank you. Questions? Counselor Flaherty?
Thank you. Um, the, uh, streetlight program, I, I thought we were, like, going LED everywhere, and it was gonna save us a lot of money. Is not, not panning out?
Not yet. So, um, the last I had heard from the G and E was that, obviously, when they replaced all of the LED lights, we paid for all of that. So, I'm hoping after next year, we'll see, uh, sorry, we'll see a decrease, um, in those costs, but I haven't seen it yet.
Are they sharing the actual cost with us? Like, do we, do we get to, say, prove it?
So, no. Um, so when they went and did that project, there was no approval on the city's side as far as the increases or anything like that. It was pretty much, here's your bill. Um, I do see what they call a true-up every month, um, or every year in the month of June, I get a true-up bill, and I get a credit. Um, but it still doesn't really take any of the sting off of how much I actually pay.
Yeah, like, commercial buildings all over the country are saving a fortune by doing this.
Yeah, so we haven't seen it yet. I'm hoping after '22 that we, we will have paid off the increased cost to install the LED lights in the streetlights. Um, the other thing that we pay for, I, I, I don't know if I actually mentioned it last year, is about two, three years ago, um, they realized that nobody was paying for the electricity on the, um, traffic signals, so they then started charging us for all the traffic signals. So, another huge portion in my budget is the traffic signals.
That was in engineering for a while, and then?
So, engineering pays for the new ones that go in, and then it switches to my budget.
There's actually an old agreement where the G and E was maintaining those signals.
They maintain them, but we?
Which inclu-
Yeah.
Okay. We can, we can talk. That was negotiated-
Yeah, I thought it was too.
A hundred years ago.
Yeah, so that, that's a pretty big expense. Um, you know, I'm paying, you know, roughly, you know, 20, well, $20,000 for traffic signals. Um, did we just put in a new one, you know, two new ones, and the city's paying for all of that, so, um, if you could do that, that would be awesome. Um, I would love to see this cost go down.
There weren't computers back there, so I'm not sure I can just check the memory, but we'll try.
I tried to get you last night, so they'd go on and off at the bottom of Union Street, or Union Street, they didn't like that idea. Um, but yeah, I, I'm pretty sure that they get grant money for flipping these lights to LEDs that should cover the capital cost of doing it, so our rate should be going down for that stuff.
I, and I agree. I wish, I, you know, the other thing that you see on here is, um, you know, we pay $23,000, $24,000 a year for the electricity costs for the old Head Start building. Um, so, you know, we pay for all of that. We paid a snowplow there, their lot. Um, so there's a lot of city expenditures that actually happen for buildings that we don't really even-
Who says they're not getting grant money?
Well, that's what I mean. That's why, show me the money. Where's the proof, right?
Yeah. Any, any other questions for Tammy?
Uh, no, I just had a follow-up to Counselor Flaherty's questions. Um, so was there no baseline bill that was given for the streetlights before the change-out?
I have not seen one. So I think in the past, they would give us what they thought would be our electricity cost for the streetlights. I haven't seen that. In a couple of years, Debbie used to share it with me, and I haven't seen it since Happy and Debbie actually left. So, I'm not sure what Chris actually did with any of that correspondence, but I used to get something that would tell me what they thought the usage would be, what they thought the invoice would be. Um, I found it funny, one year they gave us a cost, and it was lower than the actual bills that I paid, so I wasn't sure what cost they were actually sharing with, with the city.
I, and I had asked for that. I asked for an inventory of lights and how much it should cost.
Yeah, because I-
Never got it.
It wasn't easy to get, cause we, when, we did the very first light retrofits with Johnson Controls a while ago, it was very difficult getting the baseline, but that was what the whole contract was based off, was the savings. We eventually got it, but they can't get it.
I know that Brian actually gets something from the G and E, um, to help with the green communities.
Mm-hmm.
Unfortunately, it takes a lot of him massaging those numbers to actually mean something. Um, so he's getting some sort of data dump from the G and E, and it's not. So, any help in that area would be greatly appreciated. Obviously, I don't have the pull when it comes to any of those costs. Um, just one thing before, I know you guys have talked about ARPA. Um, we have applied and got our 50% on amount for the ARPA. We are working diligently to find out where, within the, um, the rules of ARPA, the different expenditures can happen. There's not a lot of guidance right now, so we are very leery on some of our stuff. Um, but we have met, I know the mayor actually talked about that last night, we have met and tried to come up with some programs that we wanna do, um, for the ARPA money. The other thing, just to give you guys a heads up, we have received, um, our CARES Act money. Um, we were able to actually fund quite a bit of stuff. Um, the hard part with the, with the CARES Act money was there wasn't, we didn't qualify for a lot of stuff, um, which was difficult, um, but we have pulled down, you know, 1.5 million. Um, we were able to give some grants to, um, some not-for-profits, um, for some health-related type stuff, so we, the Boys and Girls Club, the YMCA, um, there was another, um, childcare center that we gave some money to, um, which was nice, they were able to do some upgrades, um, to help prevent, you know, COVID. So, you know, we did look to try to expand, um, some of those grant opportunities under the CARES Act. Um, and we have applied for three different, um, public assistance grants with FEMA. I have received one, you guys graciously accepted that, and I'm still waiting for two more to come back to us. One is the large one of $222,000. That's at the state level right now, getting their little checkbox, and then hopefully that'll be coming before you guys to accept. Um, and we were able to actually get roughly 100% of all of our costs. There were a few costs that were denied, but for the most part, we were able to recoup 100% of all of our expenditures, um, for the COVID pandemic, so. But if you do have questions on the invest stuff, I'm more than happy to, to talk with you guys. You guys all know where my office is, um, and I like to talk about some of these projects, so.
There's a really good link on a presentation today from the National League of Cities and the Boston Federal Reserve-
Oh, nice.
On ARPA.
Perfect.
If you don't, if you can't find it, let me know, I'll send you a hole in.
Okay, that would be awesome. Thank you very much. I'm trying to read up as much as I can, cause-
And the MMA has been putting out bulletins as well.
Yes. So I get all of those. Um, I've done a couple of their, you know, I try to get in all of their, um, calls, you know, to make sure that we're clicking our boxes, um, checking, you know, my biggest thing when it comes to the federal monies is there, right now, there's not a lot of guidance, but as with the CARES Act and FEMA, they're constantly changing the rules on me, um, where I get something in writing approved, and two weeks later, they deny me. So, um, we're, we're trying to make sure that we don't do something we're not supposed to.
And if the council has ideas on expenditures for the ARPA, how do we get that input into the administrative stream?
I think you could probably email the mayor, or myself, and we can put it on the lists. Um, you know, the first round of ARPA money appears to be a little bit more strict on what they're allowing, um, but I think what's gonna end up happening is, within, you know, six, seven, eight months, as cities and towns are not able to actually spend their ARPA allocation within the small little confines, they're gonna widen that up. Um, so I, I think getting on lists and trying to have some dialogue on what the priorities are, I think are, are probably key right now.
And on the issue of the leases, we have a couple leases out there that are costing us money, that I've been in contact with Attorney Reed on, uh, with the possibility of non-renewing those.
Leases as far as buildings?
Buildings, yes.
Yeah.
So, we're keeping an eye on that, cause when they come up, because it's a lose-lose for the city of Westfield.
Leases are hard, especially when we're, when you're talking real estate, so.
Right.
No, I agree with you.
Any other questions?
Mr. President, pro temp, I move approval of the Purchasing Department's budget as presented.
Second.
Motion made in second. Roll call, Madam City Clerk.
Bean?
Yes.
Beltrandi?
Yes.
Burns?
Yes.
Figgy?
Yes.
Flaherty?
No.
Harris?
Yes.
Matthews Kane?
Yes.
Mello?
Yes.
Morgan Alley?
No.
Oniski?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
Alley?
Yes.
Thank you, guys. Have a good evening.
Motion passes. Thank you, Tammy. Connor, you were excellent. Joe, you're on.
Is this a COVID update?
No.
Tomorrow.
Tomorrow. Don't, don't go down that road. This is a budget hearing.
This is a walk in the park compared to a COVID update.
You could touch on that in your health, health budget.
We're doing good, by the way, with COVID. If you've checked, the numbers this week are nice, so we're still headed in the right direction.
And that is encouraging.
Okay.
Thank you.
Do you wanna take a vote now? All right, so I have three budgets. I have the nurses, which is all payroll. I have health and sanitary landfill, so where would you like to start?
Let's start with health at 1-5-1-0.
All right, so, there's not a lot of, there's not a lot in here. And by the way, I'm not a good salesman, so you can just ask me any questions you want. We'll work with whatever we get, I guess, that's the way it goes, so, um, we try and do the best we can. So, um, I don't, I, I'm not gonna go down each and every one unless you want me to. It's, we try and put the descriptions in there of what the majority of those line items are for, so hopefully that helps. Um, full-time salary, um, and, let's see, what else do we have? So, salary, then we get to the, the meat and potatoes is really just our 7,500 for purchase of services, which is mostly everything it says. Um, trying to now, with the, um, with the plateauing of COVID, to try and do more with what we started before the whole pandemic, which was to do more outreach and community education and prevention, um, so that we're not always so reactionary to putting the fires out. So, we really were trying to do more promotions, um, so hopefully we can pick that up again, and, and that's all, that's all just, radon is one of the things listed in here. We had great success with that program. And, you know, it mitigates a lot of problems that people didn't even know they had in their homes, so, it's worth the cost of, of handing out those kits. Um, other than that, supplies is just really all office supplies, gasoline, um, we had the boot reimbursement, so that's in there now, in our contract. I think we've only had one pair of boots so far, but I don't think you can cut that, so, but if you could, I'd say go ahead. Um, overtime is another one. I think that was back on the first page, but that's a, there's an explanation for that. That's for the Board of Health meeting, um, attendance meeting, minutes. Oh, and the, the other one on the, um, last page is the, we have a new lease for a vehicle, which I believe you guys knew about, and it was discussed, so that, it's, uh, made it into our budget for a more fuel-efficient vehicle, to hopefully save some money on the other side. So, that's-
Thank you.
All I got.
Any questions for Joe? Counselor Adams?
Joe, um, I know that the trash and recycling thing is jumping around on us. Is that stabilized now?
That'll be next. We'll talk about that.
All right.
Yeah, that's in, under landfill, so.
Any, any other questions?
With that, oh.
Oh, Counselor Morgan Alley, I didn't see you over there.
Thank you, Mr. President, pro temp. Uh, Joe, just, just wanna, just a comment, just to say thank you for everything that you've done in the last year plus, um, for the residents of the city, uh, for looking out for their health, and-
Thank you.
Just everything you've done, and, uh, just very appreciative. I know I speak for a lot of residents.
Yeah, I appreciate that. It was a rough road, but it, you know, we look back and it was rewarding, I guess, to say the least. We served our purpose, and that's what we're here for. So, thanks.
All right. With that, Mr. President, pro temp, I move approval of the Health Department's budget as presented.
Second.
Thank you. Motion made in second. Roll call, Madam City Clerk, please.
Bean?
Yes.
Beltrandi?
Yes.
Burns?
Yes.
Figgy?
Yes.
Flaherty?
No.
Harris?
Yes.
Matthews Kane?
Yes.
Mello?
Yes.
Morgan Alley?
No.
Oniski?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
Alley?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion passes. Now for Counselor Adams' department, sanitary landfill, please.
By the way, thank you guys for saving the best for last. And I did get to take a trip down memory lane when I was looking at all the pictures of previous councils, and from when I started 24 years ago, but, um, and with all due respect, this council is much better than any of the ones on the road.
Wow.
I think so.
Joe, you said you weren't a salesman.
I'm not a salesman.
You might wanna take this-
You might wanna take sales up. You're getting good.
We have a community development position open.
So landfill, sanitary landfill, um, again, the first part's just all, we have, we have a, uh, working foreman up there. We also have a heavy equipment operator, because we have a big payloader that's about 27 years old, so you might be hearing about that subject pretty soon, when it ceases to operate. Um, but we do take really good care of it, and it's a Volvo loader, and, uh, it's very impressive, so. Anyway, that's, uh, that's the, the heavy equipment operator, and then we have three gatekeepers, and you'll notice an increase in that, um, mostly because we brought on a third gatekeeper, and also we increased their hours to the maximum of 19, because we were having trouble making sure that there was somebody at the gate at all times, because now that we require proof of residency, even if you have an entrance permit, um, there just needs to be somebody there all the time. There can't be that, that, because, believe me, people find out when that magical time is, that they can sneak in, and they do, and they do. And you can't run them over with the loader, because it'll probably break, and, or maybe it's a liability thing, I don't know. Um, so, so that's the part-time gatekeepers, and they're, they're great, they really are. We're lucky to have them. For the amount of money that they make, and what they do, and the, and the malarkey that they have to put up with, um, they're, getting your money's worth out of them. And then the big purchase of service, which that covers the trash hauling, recycling's a separate line item, uh, a very, very tumultuous market right now, as it's been for probably the last, well, since I've had this seat. Um, we are at the end of our contract with the trash hauler, and I imagine it's gonna go up again, cause it always does. Um, we, we only now do one-year contracts with the haulers, because if we feel like we're, and this happened in the past, where I said we can't do multi-years with them anymore, because the service starts to subside, and when you're under the magnifying glass of the DEP for your solid waste at our facility, and you don't get the, um, the best service that you can out of your hauler, you're in big trouble. And that's when there's punitive action and potential- And that's when there's punitive action and potential fines. So we need to really make sure that our hauler, whoever that is that we give the contract to, and it's not the lowest bidder, it's what's most advantageous to the city, as you guys know. We need the service. We need that stuff out of there when we want it out of there. It can't sit. We can't have, you know, some rinky-dink operation that gives us excuses their trucks are breaking down or they don't have any more roll-offs or whatever. So, so I would, I would imagine, and also given the market of trash and recycling right now not getting any better or more affordable for municipalities, that it's going to go up again, even though somehow there was a reduction in that, in that line item. But you know what? As, as it's been said before, and me standing at this podium, if you need more money for trash, you just come back and ask us. You can say no, I guess. We'll have two landfills at Twist Street instead of one. But, but, so, you know, the, the good thing about it is, though, is ever since curbside stopped being brought and tipped at Twist Street, we've been pretty good with the money. I don't think, and I was very proud of this on the first year, that was the first year in my memory of 24 years where we didn't have to come and ask you for more money for trash. That was just a repeated pattern in the past. So we've kind of shortened, it's a little bit easier now without the, the variable tonnage of the curbside collection. We pretty much know the number of people and the amount of trash that we're going to go through from resident drop-off because that's all it is now. So we're trying to keep that number so that it's accurate. There's no fluff in there whatsoever. And if at the end of the year, even though it's not, it's not the optimal thing to do, but because of the, the varied amounts and the invoices that we get, that's not always the same, if we have to move money around from one account to the other, then we will. But I think that's better than having to come and stand here again and ask you for more money. So we should still try and find ways actively every day, and that's why we have our clerical position that was in the Health Department now at the transfer station to keep a better eye on what's going in and out. And even though the working foreman is up there, they, they have other, they have other shoes to fill. So they're not really like the financial money people, and it's not in their, in their job description. So it's been really helpful, and with that, with that position up there now, we're going to try and get more grants from the state for recycling because they're out there. And it's just, we need a person to be, to have the time to be able to do that. So now we do. What else is on here? That's the funnest one, really. There's a whole list of things, if you have any questions, on what else we use that purchase of service money for. I think it's pretty self-explanatory. A lot of it goes, not, well, a lot of, most of it goes to trash hauling. But then there is a good, significant amount that goes to the gas and electric for the methane flare that we were given. We were, we inherited it back after GNE abandoned the site. And, well, they just, they did, and they surplus that little, if you've ever seen it, there's a little chain-linked fence area that has the methane flare and a garage that used to have generators in it. And, and now we have to pay for the operation of the motor for that flare, which is on 24/7. And it was, it was a little sticker shock. They, so there's actual meter there now, and we get charged for the, and maybe this is a discussion for a whole nother day.
We might need to have a little genie.
Yeah, can, can we add this one to the streetlights? Because there's an agreement on that, too.
I didn't know. Okay.
Might have a shot.
All right. And then recycling on the next page, it did increase because unfortunately now we have to pay for our recycling. It started last year. It's not a free thing anymore. When we went, when we had dual stream, we would actually get money back. In dual stream, meaning we separated plastic and cardboard, bottles and cans from cardboard and paper. And, and there was a market for that. And then all of a sudden, the market went away, and, and there was no more demand for our stuff. And so we pretty much merged it into a single stream, which gave us zero back, which was fine. Zero's fine. And then last year, just because of this, it's an interesting one because it really is dependent on the global market, and not a lot of other budgets in this city can actually say that. So if there's not a market globally for this product, good luck getting rid of it. I mean, it's, it's not to the point yet where it's going to get commingled with trash. We still try and do the right thing and recycle, but it's at a cost. And it, and it's at a significant cost even for just residential drop-off because people love to bring recyclables up there. And that's just the way they've been encouraged for years, and it's the right thing to do. And if you have a lot of it, rather than putting it in a dumpster somewhere or at the Franklin Street lot where there's cameras that you might get caught now by PJ Miller, then you might want to bring it up to Twist Street, and that's what they do. So it's now about half of what we pay for trash is what we pay for recycling. So if we're at $90 a ton for trash, we're at $45 a ton for recycling. And it's, that's just ridiculous. But that's the world we live in now, and maybe things will change with new policies, foreign policies and administrations, and we'll see what happens. And hopefully next year I'll come back and say, and look at all the money we're going to make from cardboard now. But it even got so bad that we had a program where we were taking in what's called bulky rigid plastic. So if you think of like all the old, the kids' playground equipment in the backyard and all that stuff, we had a company that would take it and recycle it. And, and we, so we weren't charging residents for that. And just this past contract, the, the hauler said, nope, we're not, we're not taking that anymore. It needs to go in with the regular trash. So that also went from being a free thing that they would take because there was a market for it to now adding additionally to our trash hauling costs and taking up a lot of space in the, in the dumpsters, too. So it doesn't compress easily. All right.
Questions. Counselor Flaherty?
Thank you. The purchase of service trash hauling, is that curb to dump or just from Twist Street to dump?
It's just from Twist Street to.
Wherever it goes.
Yeah.
And the recycling, same thing?
Same thing.
And do our fees for the stickers and the charges we charge people cover that? It's like $320,000 or so? So.
Would you like it to?
Yes.
Okay. Right now, we generate from sticker sales and entrance permits about $150,000 a year.
So we'd have to double it.
Okay.
And that would be really.
I, I mean, that's a conversation I think that needs to be had, and I'm in favor of it. But you will have 4,000 people lined up yelling and screaming about, right now already $25 that we charge is a horrible robbery, if you listen to what people say. So, or not everybody. I mean, some people go, oh, this is great. In Southwick, it's 175, but Southwick doesn't have curbside either.
Go to Wilberham.
Well, we pay 80. Don't we pay 80 on our utility bill plus the 25?
The solid waste management.
Solid waste, yeah, that, some, so. But we don't get those calls. They go to the mayor, so we're okay doing that.
We do.
But I think, I think that's one of the things we have to explain to people is the costs go up. We have to charge more for the same thing.
And most reasonable people understand that.
Yeah.
And, and I, and I do agree with you. I think they do, we went up from, I think, where we are at $10, and it went up to 25. Oh.
But if they took a gallon of paint, if they took a gallon of paint to that recycler near the sewer treatment plant, they'd pay more than that.
What we really try to do is we try to not make people have an entrance permit for something that's not going to cost the city anything. So for, right now for leaves and grass clippings, there's, you don't need a sticker because there's no cost to us. There's, there's vendors out there, there's companies that want to take that raw material and turn it into compost. We can't do that. We tried it once, and it was a disaster because we had to rent a screener for $50,000, and when we sold the product, we got $51,000. Plus all the diesel fuel and man-hours that we spent turning and moving things around. So now that, it's a different day, but I don't anticipate it's going to be any better. So, but, but with those things, if, and we did that with the bulky rigid plastic, too. We had the dumpster right by the gate, so it was free. If you didn't have a sticker and you wanted to get rid of it, go ahead, get rid of it. We'll call them when it's full and we'll come take it. But I do agree, it's prob, the individual item sticker costs haven't gone up in at least 10 years. So there's that. And I believe this is something I, I know this is something that I would have to take to the Board of Health and have them vote. If, if, and I don't, I don't know if this is something anybody wants to chime in on, but I, I will do that unless I hear after this a lot of resistance on, on the part of you all to say, no, don't do it because we're going to, our phones are going to blow up.
Counselor Bean?
There's also a fine line in residents starting to dump stuff in woods.
Right.
And the end of their cul-de-sacs. You know, that's happened, you know, and we spend more time tracking these washing machines down, AC units and paint cans and
Right.
trash bags of all sorts of stuff, so.
There's a, there's a happy medium, though, because.
And Springfield went through raising their trash fee with, with some angst, too. So there's some legal issues that we need to tackle. I think we go through the process clearly, but
Yeah.
there's a reason why it hasn't moved.
The entrance permit should probably stay where it is. That's, that's, we, we did pretty well in raising that from 10 to 25 recently. I think the individual item stickers are probably outdated. And, you know, for $25, you can dump as much trash up there as you want. But for things that you can't put in the trash, that you need an individual sticker for, tires, propane tanks, things of that nature, I, I think people would be happy to pay because there's no other way to get rid of it. And as long as we're not going to be more expensive than going to a private facility, then I, I don't see a reason why that shouldn't go up. And, and I didn't do that calculation of what our, what we actually bring in because we'd usually do it every year, but we got hit so hard with COVID and we were closed at the transfer station. So this year's number is really not representative, but in a normal year, it's probably around $150,000.
I think it's worth looking at, and I know, because I've called some of these places to take trash away, and it costs a lot more. So people are used to it. If they, if they wanted to have a private company come and take it, they'd pay a lot more. And it's worth it. How about municipal waste combustors? I know some of us don't want to breathe that stuff, but there are some clean MWCs around. Are there any that are nearby us that we could at least have some kind of benefit for rather than filling up Chicopee or other places?
So you're talking about places with like anaerobic digesters and things like that?
Well, Jerry Tracy loved that, but I'm thinking lately, this stuff, can we take this and burn it somewhere? I know there's one, say, over in Pittsfield, in the Lawrence and Lowell area. And I know they just denied one in Springfield, but they're supposedly getting much better. Not perfect, I know. She's giving me the evil eye. But there are, there are.
I'm with you on this one, Counselor. Same size for the water issue, right?
So, but no, so the answer's no, probably.
No, no, the answer's not, no. No, the answer is that it all comes down to the costs to the city. So I just lost it. There's an incinerator in Springfield. And we did ask, the, the RFPs were put out, and they sent back something just the way that the Casella companies and all the other ones that truck it to a landfill do. And it was horrible. And they wanted a minimum of like a 10-year contract.
Okay.
Or they wouldn't take it. So there are those other facilities. I think ultimately down the road, this is kind of off the top a little bit, but to answer your question, that's not, that's something that the city could do. We could do that. I've visited other municipalities where they have digesters. They have aerobic and anaerobic digesters. And they're very efficient and they're, and now very compact. And, you know, there's alternate ways to get rid of our trash. However, it would have to be all or nothing because if our curbside trash is still going to go to some landfill somewhere and our drop-off is going and through a digester where we're, we're making some viable product out of it, it really doesn't make sense. So that's, you know, 21st century now, I guess we should start looking at those options. Of course, the, the, the cost would be huge to get those systems set up. We've priced them out before. But in the long run, if that means you're not going to keep exponentially increasing your solid waste disposal every year, I mean, we're going to run out of place.
Oh, I just was wondering if it was a regional thing that I didn't know about. I know there's, that, the one that just got rejected. I know there's one in Pittsfield. But I don't know of any others close by.
Marlborough, but I don't think we want to go out there.
All right. Thank you.
Sounds like a great conversation.
And I'm not promoting it. I'm just asking.
Are we all set, Counselor? He's asking for a friend.
Yep.
Counselor Morganelli?
Thank you, Mr. President Pro Temp. Joe, just from the, from the homeowner's perspective, they, we, about 15 years ago, we had the recycle bin and the trash bin. All the stuff that you put in the recycle bin was supposed to be recycled, and we were supposed to get money back. Did that, did that ever happen back then? Were we getting money back? And then what happens to it now when it goes?
So you mean when we made the conversion to single stream where we had now, as we do now with the one barrel and, or I guess it doesn't.
Right. We had paper, plastic and soup cans, and you'd put it all in the one.
In single stream.
Yeah, single stream.
Recycling, yeah. When that program first started, I think we had to spend about $700,000 to get the containers. And there was a huge debate about downsizing the trash container because we took the old 96-gallon trash container and made that the recycling container.
Flip-flop.
Yeah, so that, that was, but when, that year when that happened, there was still a market for single stream. That was actually kind of the, the wave of the future, like everybody's going to be single stream from now on, and they have the technology to separate things out the facility. Lo and behold, to find out that most of that is separated by hand, which is a job I would never, ever want anybody that I know to have because it's horrible. I've been to these facilities, but they do it. And so, yes, we got money back. Then we wouldn't have converted to single stream if we were going to be paying more because we already had the expense of the, of the new barrels. And the market at that time was, yep, it's, okay, so it's not going to give you as much as dual stream, but you'll still get money back. And then every year after that, it got less and less till it was zero, a zero tipping fee. And to where we are now, where even if we did dual stream now, it's still going to cost money. It's not going to be free. So we're just in that world. What happens to the, to the materials all depends on who we have a contract to, to take our recycling and where they bring it. So right now, we have a company that, they're master garbologist, which I've always loved that. It's a great name. But they, and they don't even do garbage, it's recycling, so I don't know what that's all about. But they, 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 most of the time will take it to the mass recycling facility. Or there's other private places where they bring it, and then it gets processed there. And I want to say maybe Holyoke. But that'll all change with new contracts this year, too, so don't hold me to it. It might be a whole different world after July 1st.
So you do believe it's being recycled somewhat, or that it's being reused, turned into something usable?
Yes.
Or is it just being thrown along?
Well, I don't believe that it's 100% because there's a lot of contamination. There's a lot of materials that they can't use, that are damaged or inappropriate. So I think they, they sort through and they take the good stuff and they try and do good things with it. But again, the market is only such that, I mean, that, right now, at least the vendors that we have will tell us when they don't want our junk stuff anymore. They're not just going to take it, charge us and throw it in a landfill. You know, they'll say, we're not taking this anymore. It, so you put it in the trash. We're not going to put it in the trash, like I said, with the bulky rigid plastic. They could have easily have just taken that and then said, well, we have to start charging now. And then they could have just thrown it, you know, mixed it up with regular trash. But that's why we are pretty careful about who we go with, with the contracts. Like I said, luckily, it doesn't have to be the lowest bidder. It can just be whoever's going to give us the service and maybe tell us what we want to hear.
Any other questions?
I move approval of the sanitary landfill budget as presented.
Second. Motion made in seconded. Roll call, Madam City Clerk.
Bean?
Yes.
Belchandy?
Yes.
Burns?
Yes.
Vicki?
Yes.
Flaherty?
No.
Harris?
Yes.
Matthews Kane?
Yes.
Mello?
Yes.
Morganelli?
No.
Oniski?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
Alley?
I'm sorry, what was the question? No, yes.
There's just the last one, is the nurses, there's nothing in there except salary. That's all it is. We're gonna, I, I did talk to Vicki about it, and we're trying to move some things around to, to, you know, maybe, maybe sometime the nurses can just be under help. I don't really know why it was ever separated out anyway. But that's all it is. It's the supervis- But that's all it is. It's the supervising public health nurse, now the assistant director, and the staff nurse. And then there's, there's a couple of small items that are just contractual. Deborah Mulvena's been here so long, she actually qualifies for longevity amount and, and also educational incentive. So I think she might be the only one left in the city that actually gets that from a previous agreement. So that's all the nurses are. That's it.
Thank you, Joe. Any questions on the nurses? Counselor Flaherty?
Just kudo to the nurses. All the nurses during COVID, they did an awful lot, including our friends at the schools, including one of my favorite nurses, so kudos to all of them. Yeah, but, yeah, the nurses did a great time, and they all, they all enjoyed what they did, too, by the way, even though they gave up their normal thing to come help. But these nurses did a ton that people don't realize, so thank you.
Very true. A lot of stuff that a lot of people don't realize, but I always used to say sometimes in the beginning when we pulled in 10 school nurses, that, that's unbelievable. 10 of them on top of our state-funded contact tracer in-house and then our two nurses. So we had 13 people doing contact tracing and in all different places around, scattered everywhere, just trying to give them all phones and laptops or whatever, I don't know. And, and, and you'd walk in every day, and it was like working in the stock market. There's people screaming, everyone's on the phone, someone's crying. And, but they were phenomenal. We, I don't know what we would have done without them, and I, I can't give them enough credit, so. It kind of helped our other nurses from having nervous breakdowns, too, so that was nice. We still have them.
Any other questions?
With that, Mr. President Pro Temp, I move approval of the nurses' budget as presented.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Roll call, Madam City Clerk.
Bean?
Yes.
Beltrandy?
Yes.
Burns?
Yes.
Figgy?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Absolutely.
Guess who gets to go home?
Harris?
Yes.
No, 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 no. Tip had that wrong. All politics is personal.
Let's see if we get it unanimous.
Can we have a disclosure on that one?
Matthews Kane?
Yes.
Mello?
Yes.
Morganelli?
Yes.
Oniski?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Adams? Ally?
Yes.
Motion passes. Thank you, Joe. Thank everybody on your staff for a job well done. And is there a, I, I'm hearing that there's going to be a vaccination clinic at the mill? You get a beer and a sandwich if you get vaccinated.
And, and a chance for a million-dollar lottery ticket, so.
I don't know which one it is, but, yeah, it's, it's not a bad deal.
No, no, no. Do you know, do you know which?
Rocky Allen.
Right. Do you know what vaccine it is?
Rocky Allen's doing it, paying for it, but I don't know what the actual location is.
I think, yeah, Moderna is what CVS has. The other thing is the governor just came out. He's copying the great state of Ohio, the Buckeyes. We do have a lottery going for a million dollars, and I think there's three or four full boats, college scholarships. So anyone who's vaccinated is eligible, starting July 1st. You just have to plug into the website and you get, get your lottery ticket, so.
And don't worry if I do announce the year.
Will you? That's reassuring, Joe.
When you can use my budget, I'll just put vaccines.
Okay. You heard that, Counselor. Okay. Our next, our next meeting of the whole will be tomorrow at 6:00 PM. DPW will be on tap, and then we'll have a 7 o'clock council meeting. Any comments or questions from the council? Counselor Harris?
Motion to adjourn. Second.
Motion is made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Meeting adjourned.